Council Huddle.
Mr. Chair, for executive session, I would like to add 6D for labor negotiations. I received a communication from the mediator that I'd like to share with the board.
Okay. Anything else?
None here, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion, please.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Further discussion? Ready, JJ?
Yes.
Roll, please.
Mr. Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, next is presentations. We have a presentation on our water master coverage for Curry County. Jake Johnstone is here from Southwest Regional Oregon Water Resources Department. Mr. Johnstone.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Pash. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing this opportunity. Thank you, Director Schmelzer, for getting me on the agenda here. I'll just briefly introduce myself for the record. Jake Johnstone. I am the Southwest Region Manager for the Oregon Water Resource Department. I am based out of the Medford office, covering the Southwest Region, which is Jackson, Josephine, Coos, Curry, and Douglas Counties. As many of you know, we have experienced a restructuring with the Oregon Water Resource Department. I'd like to explain a little back history on that, a little story of how that came about. And then I'd like to go into the coverage that we'll be providing moving forward in the future, and then answer any questions you may have relating to that. In 2016, the Oregon Secretary of State did an audit on the Oregon Water Resource Department to look at the agency as a whole, look at places where we could make system improvements, different avenues we could utilize to try and increase efficiency in managing the state's water resources. So for us in Oregon Water Resource Department, we're charged with the public benefit of surface and groundwater. Some of the suggestions that came out of that were requesting more staffing from the legislative session to meet growing needs of field services divisions in different areas around the state. And other suggestions came out regarding auditing workloads in different districts around the state. Just as a brief explanation, you'll hear me refer to districts. A lot of district lines around the state were carved up along county lines, so there's the term Josephine County Water Master, which is really District 14. So just to clarify, that's a state-held position, not a county-funded position. So the district analytics came back. We looked at it. We've asked for, the department has requested, in our agency-requested budget, packages that would supply more field staff to our field offices to meet growing work needs where they're needed. That did not come about. So one of the other suggestions was to, following the audit of workload, find ways where we could shift staff to meet the needs. The Willamette Valley, as you well know, is a growing population density. It has growing water concerns and water issues for water management. The District 16, which was one of the largest in water right numbers, almost double what the average district has in water rights, was requiring more workload than the water master there could feasibly get to. So there has also been a reclassification of the Willamette storage projects. There are a little over a dozen reservoirs in the Willamette Basin managed between state and federal partners. So along that workload, in order to get ahead of it, the decision was made to shift the position authority for a coastal water master, District 19, up to the Willamette Valley, carving that district, which was 16, in two, creating a new district to the west of the river there to help with that workload. So that more closely aligns the workload for those two new districts, the one that's been subdivided and then the other new one. There's also some movements of district lines you'll see on the maps. I apologize, the lines are blue, which can be somewhat hard to follow, but you can see there's a thicker blue line for the newer lines, the newer boundaries, and a thinner blue line for the older boundaries. So these new districts are more closely aligned with evenly distributing the amount of water rights, points of diversion, residents, that kind of thing. So what does that mean moving forward for the coast, for the South Coast? So we have the Josephine County Water Master or District 14 Water Master, which is out of the Grants Pass office. This is a Scott Cicilline. I've clipped his business card to the top corner of the map there for you. He is out of the Grants Pass office. He currently provides coverage for Josephine County. For what he will be absorbing will be your county. Curry County will be part of District 14. The boundary line, as we've put it on this map, and please consider the, you know, the draft note on the top of this map here, but the way we've divided it right now is along the county lines for ease of use in moving forward. So he would be covering Josephine and Curry County out of the Grants Pass. The Douglas County Water Master, Umpqua Basin Water Master, District 15, out of Roseburg, will be absorbing Coos County. So part of this reorganization that we've done for field services, it is not specific to just the District 19 Water Master. There are a handful of other positions that are involved in this. We've moved around some district boundaries around the state. We've shifted some position responsibilities, and we've had to find purchase or find staffing savings in order to create more support for the Southwest Region to help with this reallocation of workload. What that means for the South Coast is that we have a new regional assistant water master, and the assistant water master is like our Swiss Army knife in our field services division. That individual can do all the different tasks and is not beholden to district boundaries. That individual can work wherever is needed in the region. So there will be a new regional assistant water master, which I will be posting out of the Grants Pass office. So that office goes from one staff to two staff, a water master and a regional assistant. That regional assistant will shift over to help cover the coast workload as necessary in Coos and Curry County. I will also be bringing online another full-time regional assistant water master out of the Medford office, and that one, the Medford office being the regional office where we have the most resources, that one will also serve to assist with Douglas, Josephine, Coos, Curry, and Jackson County coverage. Any questions?
Well, I have one immediate question. I was kind of wondering, as the Willamette Valley continues to grow, and actually down into Grants Pass-Medford area, that area is growing as well, I'm just wondering, where are you drawing the water resources for that growth from? I've been told that some of the water resources for the Medford area are coming from the Rogue River, and I'm wondering if there's truth to that.
Yeah, so the Medford Water Commission has a really interesting water supply system. They get their water out of Big Butte Springs area, that watershed up there, and then they also get water out of the Rogue River. They primarily get their water out of Big Butte Watershed, which accounts for some of the cleanest municipal water in the country. They supplement it with Rogue River water as necessary at certain times of the summer. So.
My concern with that is, as you may or may not know, is the Rogue River, with the fish issues that we're having, the temperatures in the river have risen, the water level has dropped, we've got a lot of gravel in the river now that's worked its way down since the removal of a couple of dams, and of course, we're losing our spawning grounds because of temperatures, water temperatures, algae blooms, those kind of things that are happening in the river now. So that continued draw-off of the river for the continued growth in the Medford area is having an effect farther downriver, and it's just something that I'd like, you know, maybe to have people constantly thinking about as that area grows, where they draw the water from and the consequences that'll have for other counties like Curry County.
Sure, sure. Yeah, and it's a very valid point, and it's a good consideration when we talk about water management. One of the reasons, you know, and I apologize for not having gotten out here earlier, I know that we tried to schedule, and then there were a bunch of storms, and that's on me for not making it out here earlier than that. I understand what it's like to live in a rural county. I'm from Josephine County. I have that dubious honor, so.
We won't all let against you.
You know, that's what they set up north, too.
Dubious.
But, you know, one of the things that I want to do is offer to you an avenue to talk about water resources. If there are considerations you have, like the, you know, consumptive use of the Bear Creek area, the Medford area, please reach out to me. Another thing to consider is, right now, the Governor's Office with Natural Resource Management has a 100-year water vision project that they're working on. There are some public meetings being held. There's one on November 7th in Medford, and this isn't an agency-staffed meeting. It is an opportunity for folks like yourself, stakeholders, so that could be environmental groups to resource groups to municipalities. It's an opportunity, folks, to come talk about what they envision being future needs and future concerns. And then those notes will be given up to the Director's Office and also over to the Governor's Office as they try and formulate a 100-year water vision. So those are really valid concerns, and those are things we want to be attentive to. The Rogue River is blessed with having that Lost Creek Reservoir, that Bureau project, so we do get some regular flows.
Could you repeat the date and time and place of that regional meeting you were talking about?
Can, I'm going to make a note here to follow up with Julie or with the board here regarding the time, and I don't believe that the facility has been established, but it's Medford, November 7th.
Okay. It's pretty quick. It's coming up. It's a week from today.
Yeah. I think they were trying to figure out in schedule, as you can well imagine with very important schedules, about a dozen of these around the state, so I apologize for the short notice.
It's okay.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, getting over here is no small thing. We appreciate that very much. And yes, we've been hearing from some of our citizens, especially in North County, you know, how this might affect them. I think about a month ago, I handed out to the Commissioners a two-page document on the 100-year water vision that recently come out, as you know, from Oregon Water Resources Department. And we spent some time with Mr. Pryor and trying to understand, you know, it seems to be this magical number 16 is the number of water masters that Oregon can justify expense. And so I think our North County people, Mr. Johnstone, were really concerned with the distance and how well the different districts will work together. And so that's a little bit of an issue. Of course, the travel time and just the overall highlighted demand for water in Oregon and this 100-year vision. So I'm really, we've been really encouraging people to take a serious look at that and understand what it could mean, what the consequences, good and potentially bad, could be for, you bet, our citizens. So one more comment or a question for you. Did you say Clamath County or just Jackson, Josephine, Curry? Five counties?
Five counties, Commissioner Boyce. I do not have Clamath County as part of my jurisdiction.
That's a tough one, isn't it?
It is. We do assist, as state staff, we do assist with regulation in the Clamath as needed out of the Medford office, but that is not a primary responsibility for the Southwest Region.
Well, thank you again for coming over here, and I get the sense you're going to be accessible, and that's an expectation for our citizens, and I think it's very important. And again, you getting here on short notice and getting on the agenda, thank you, Director Schmelzer. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Director?
Jake, I just wanted to say I think your timing is impeccable. We just received an email yesterday from Susan Morgan from the Association of Oregon Counties, relaying this map to us and talking about it, so I'm glad to see you got over here right away. That was great. I know a lot of people are concerned about the loss of a water master, but I'm not sure if everyone understands the services they can get online that they no longer need an in-person person there for. And I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit about the services that are available to people online, in particular Realtors or landowners that are looking to research their water rights or find out what's involved on these.
Sure, and thank you, Director Schmelzer, for that question. I want to touch on something real quick that I forgot to highlight in the beginning and the opening. This reorganization goes into effect in January, so until the end of the year, there will be no change in service. District 19 Water Master will still be in his office and available to the public as per the usual. Along that thread, one of the things that we've noticed is a rapid decline in front-counter traffic, and one of the reasons that we believe that is, is a combination of us continuing to update the technology we have available online. So online and in public record format, you can get water rights informations for properties, you can get well log information, you can get all the forms for different water right applications, and that has mitigated a lot of our front-counter traffic. We also, water masters take it upon themselves, as workload allows, to schedule meetings with Realtor groups. So when I was Josephine County Water Master, I did a handful of Realtor classes where I take in a bunch of Realtors from the community and teach them how to research water rights. Now, that's not going to mitigate every water right research, there's some complicated ones out there, but it can really help with their workload as they go to list properties. The Commissioners in Coos County express some concern regarding access to records, that kind of thing. They also express some concern regarding training opportunities for public who would be interested in further understanding the water rights process, how to utilize the website, that kind of thing. I think that's a valid concern and both a great opportunity for us to educate the public. We have a pretty widely-used Water Rights 101 that we can cram into 30 minutes or an hour, or when I did it with Realtors, it was three hours, an hour and a half of this is what we do, and then an hour and a half of now, everyone get out your laptop. So that is something we could, you know, find a time to offer down here on the South Coast, and we could find a facility that has Wi-Fi and do something along those lines to really maximize the exposure to the website. One of the things that I want to point towards that has been a goal of mine since assuming this post as Region Manager, was to coordinate with your facility and you folks on having a location, a desk, whatever the case may be, whatever's available, where our water master or regional assistant or myself can come and schedule office hours. So that would be allowing the folks of Curry County a scheduled opportunity to come in and have face-to-face time with the Water Resource Department personnel. You know, the future of how we manage this very valuable waters resource, there will be more consumptive use, as Chair Pash was pointing out, and we are attempting to move our resources in a manner by which we can really do a good job of giving the public resources, but it's also less of the one water master whose only responsibility is that district and more of us working as a team to cover the needs. So along that thread, the way I envision this would be, you know, you'll have Scott Cicilline, who's the District 14 Water Master, you'll have him as a resource, you have the regional office as a resource, where myself and other regional assistant water masters and the District 13 Water Master are housed. And I've had every job but one in the region. I have not been a well inspector, but I've been a hydrologic technician, a regional assistant water master, a water master, and now Region Manager. So I'm a multi-tool as well, and I'm not opposed to coming out here and, you know, spending a couple of days with office coverage as well. So we understand that this will be difficult for some of your constituents, and I do apologize for that, and hard decisions were made, and I also know that hard decisions are made in the legislative session, and I do not envy the position of having to figure out which agencies and departments in the state of Oregon get budgeting or get additional funding. That is a very difficult task, so this is how we're going to accommodate the workload.
Commissioner Boyce?
Two quick questions, if I may, or clarifications. You mentioned coming to, routinely coming here and standing up in office where people could schedule in to see you. Did I understand that right?
That's what we would hope to do.
Down the road?
Correct. What we want to do in the next few months, Commissioner, is get a good idea of what we're looking at for foot traffic and workload and try and accommodate the needs as that comes up.
Well, that sounds like good news to me. The second clarification needed there, we're part of, Curry County is part of the District 14, Josephine County. Porfirio Langlos people, they have two and a half hours to get to Roseburg, or they would have three hours or more to get to Grants Pass, normal travel conditions. No prohibition or concerns that those North County folks couldn't go to your water master in your region, Douglas County, Roseburg?
Yeah. There's no hard line saying no to that. And going through the resources that are in the District 19 office, looking at, for example, the files, the old water rights files, that boundary is going to be a little flexible on the needs to meet the constituents. Generally, as you know, counties are historically split a lot along geographical lines. Well, that's also how we generally would carve up water master districts based off of drainages. So for this draft map and for where it stands right now and for ease of consistency moving forward, it's along the county lines. But as I said before, we want to be a regional resource, so if there's a convenience, if someone's going to Roseburg anyway to do their shopping or whatever the case may be, it's not unheard of that they'd be able to talk to Douglas County Water Master, or, sorry, the District 15 Water Master.
You just brought up another topic, water runoff. And I have had someone come to me and ask me about the wetlands. Does your office also handle what's determined to be wetlands and what's not?
We do not.
Okay.
That would be Department of State lands.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure on that. All right.
I wish it was that way. Under that category.
Southwest Region, correct. 13, 14, 15 are the Southwest Region districts.
Oh.
You got to adjust that microphone.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. First of all, I just want to say that.
Becky Crockett?
Yes, that's my name, Becky Crockett. Greg Whacker, our water master, has done an awesome job. We send referrals to him every day, sometimes two, three, four referrals every day. I get comments back that people have tried to leave messages, but his phone log is so full that they can't leave a message, and I just tell him, try again. We're extremely concerned about what's going to happen here in regards to the public. In order for them to submit an application, they have to have confirmation on water rights or confirmation that they have a well. Some of that information, yes, can be obtained online. The dilemma, though, is a lot of these water right issues are very complicated. Somebody may think that they have access to water, but they don't really know until they talk to the water master and figure out what's going on as far as the history of that water source. So this creates quite a burden for the county, and it will slow down the ability of people to submit their applications. So it's just a little bit inconsistent with the desire to move quickly through the development process and get people their permits. This will, I believe, significantly stall our ability to provide that service to the public. There was mention of a regional assistant water master in Grants Pass. I was excited when I heard that mention. However, I also heard that that person would serve both Coos and Curry County. I would just suggest that it might be good to allocate that person at least to Curry County for all of the requests that your agency historically has gotten in regards to questions on water rights. So I really appreciate the opportunity for you to come and tell us what's going to happen, but I would like to make sure that it's clear that this will slow down the development process.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyce?
I think there's going to be work in the, even hopefully in the short session, to increase that number of 16. There's a lot of talk about that because it's so common in rural areas. Obviously, as you know, not just Curry County, but it is a very valid concern that they're just going to be spread thinner and thinner, and that's a huge concern. Yes, thanks.
Thanks. Okay. Anything else?
Josh, I will work on a 101 for the public along with the Realtors, and we'll try and schedule it for January or February and have you and your staff back to meet everybody and hopefully help with a smooth transition.
And one thing we're going to be doing is we're going to be crafting up a press release and then sending that out to the relevant news organizations to notify folks prior to the beginning of the year, giving people some notice on who they can contact and where they can get resources.
Commissioner Gold?
With our inability to contact the roadmaster right now, it sounds like people are having a hard time.
Watermaster.
Watermaster, what did I say?
Roadmaster.
Oh, I've got roads on the brain. Anyway, would it be possible for you to set up some sort of maybe bi-weekly schedule or something to come to Curry County so that people, you could be available, the water master could be available to the folks that need that help?
Yeah, that's our intent with Coos County was to start with maybe a bi-weekly schedule and then go from there based off of workload needs. That would be something we could coordinate in Curry County with cooperation from the county here of finding a desk or a location that the constituents could have the knowledge that this same location will be accessible on those dates. I also want to point out that I know that there's drive time included, but if there are time-sensitive complaints or issues that come up, it is something that we want to be responsive to. It is something that we would find one of our resources to come out to. And I also want to, again, reiterate that we're a region, and as a region, we're a team, and therefore, it's not just the Grants Pass Water Master who would have to come over and meet the needs over here. It would be one of two regional assistants or myself. And I don't like to sit behind a desk all the time, so I like to get out in the field.
And I think another thing that would be very helpful for citizens, especially that are filing for permits and that, is to have someone to talk to to answer those questions, that when they actually dial the number, somebody answers that phone, because that's what I've heard a lot of, is all you get is a message that says, "I'm sorry, but this person's voicemail box is full." Click.
Sure.
And they've got those questions that they want to have answered, so to have a number that they can actually call and get those questions answered might save someone a trip here, you know?
That's a really good point, and I would point out that our regional office, 541-774-6880, has a staffed 40-hour-a-week office administrator, and her name is Kristy Haynes, and she's very competent in answering basic water right questions, water right queries, that kind of thing. And then 503-986-0900 is the Salem main number. I advise all my water masters and generally field staff want to do this, that in our voicemail, we say, "You've reached so-and-so. If you have a pressing issue and you can't get ahold of me, please contact the region or the Salem office."
That's great. All right. I think that's all we have. Thank you for coming out. We appreciate it.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Look forward to seeing you again.
Yep, thank you.
All right, next up, we have number four, announcement, North County Budget Committee vacancy due to resignation with term expiring on December 31st of 2019. Ms. Schmelzer?
Yes. Ken Dukey, who was on our budget committee, has resigned, and so we need to find a replacement for him. We need to advertise that position. It would be somebody from his district, the North District. And because we have a budget committee meeting coming up on November 12th, we'd like to get going on this as soon as possible to get the word out that we're looking for someone. So we just.
Yeah, maybe we can even get, he just stepped out, but maybe we can get our newspapers to put something in the paper that we need someone from North County to get back on the budget committee so that they have a voice in our budget.
Correct. So if the board's okay with that, we'll move ahead with advertising and looking for that person.
Certainly, certainly, absolutely. All right, next we have public comments. Hearing that, closed?
Mr. Chair, could I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Good, thank you. You were part of this as well. With the Brookings Head Start project, we received an invoice from Brookings for some water hookup and SDC fees to the tune of close to $11,000, and we sent a written request to the City Council of Brookings to waive that, to contribute it to the project. I went down to the meeting as well as some representatives from Brookings Head Start on Monday. Brookings City Council reminded us that historically, they haven't waived SDCs for hospitals or schools, but nevertheless, we got a partial grant from them for $3,100 towards a project, which we are grateful for. So just for the record, just like to send a notice of appreciation to the Brookings City Council for the contribution to the project.
Thanks for your work on that. We appreciate it. Good work.
So I have a question regarding that. Is the county going to be responsible for the rest of the remaining charges, or is...
Well, see, that's what I think helped us get them to contribute, because I think if it were just the county, they would not have been that sympathetic. But if you remember under the agreement, we have an agreement with the group Orca, who's running the Brookings Head Start, and they're a not-for-profit. Anything that is not covered by the grant, they have to cover. That's why they came up with that $58,000 for the foundation work, and they came up with $30,000 for the architect. So when some of the questions from the Brookings City Council were, you know, the county's kind of got some nerve asking us for money, and we had to remind them that really, when we value-engineered the project, components came out from the end result, which will be Orca's, and so we just reminded them, it's really not benefiting the county, it's benefiting the Orca and the project, so.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, so next we have the consent agenda. I'm sorry.
Which counselor said we had the nerve? No, I'm kidding.
That's okay. It's probably on a recording somewhere. I was paraphrasing. They didn't really say we have a lot of nerve, but it was.
Appreciate that.
It was just kind of a vibe I picked up, and again, it may just be my impression, and that could be wrong, but they, I think if it were just us asking, we might not have, you know, it might not have been successful.
I'm cycling through all the.
Oh, that's okay. I don't want to start anything. It may do.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. Board approval for the Dyer Partnership Task Order 10A, $156,390 to move forward with 30% engineering for $2.14 million. Moral Bridge Project, per agreement, 33365.
30% engineering for $2.14 million moral bridge project per Agreement 33365 from the Road Department.
That we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second Chair Pash. Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, at this time, we are going to enter into executive session per ORS 1926602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, ORS 1926602H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed, ORS 1926602A to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent, and Counsel Huddle, you mentioned one other.
Thank you. I believe it's D, which is to confer with designated representatives in labor negotiations.
All right, so at this time, we're going to recess this meeting and enter executive session. This meeting is in recess.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County.
Higher order so he can begin working? Is my understanding that Eric Ansett would like him to begin working on November 8?
All right, do I have a motion? So move, Mr. Chair.
Oh, second that.
Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Yes, sir.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, next, we don't have any others, and we don't have any comments because this is a special meeting?
Yes.
All right, so this meeting is adjourned. Well, I even have a comment today.